Good afternoon and welcome. We're pleased to have everyone with us this afternoon. We have two cases on the docket. They will be heard in the order in which they appear on the docket. Let me remind all counsel that each side has a total of 15 minutes, and that applies whether there's one attorney or multiple attorneys arguing. And if you do have multiple attorneys, you'll have to decide how to allocate that 15 minutes. The appellant has the right to reserve up to five of your 15 minutes. So when you come to the podium, just tell us how many minutes you wish to reserve, and we'll program the clock accordingly. Are there any announcements or introductions? Hearing none, please call the first case.
Wesley Holder et al. versus Marshall County Board of Education et al.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Colin Calhoun for the appellants and the plaintiffs in this case, Wesley Holder and his parents, Cleveland Holder and Carol Holder. May I reserve four minutes for...
Four minutes, yes, sir.
Yes, Your Honor. This case is a test of the line between a school having no duty to guarantee the safety of students in all circumstances, and the duty of a school to supervise students to protect them from unreasonable risk of harm that are foreseeable. Here, in this case, the trial court concluded that there was an absence of proximate cause because there was no prior history of antagonism between the two students at issue. Wesley Holder, who was a 13-year-old eighth grader, and Shooter Favors, I believe he was in the seventh grade. And the evidence before the court was clear. There was no history between these students of any prior hostilities, fights, arguments. There was evidence that was offered by the principal of Lewisburg Middle School, Morgan Sanders, that they had some disciplinary history, but it was for mischievous behavior that's more common for students of that age. Here, Lewisburg Middle School had a specific policy. It was not written, but the school had a dismissal protocol when it comes to the manner in which schools leave each day. The bell at that time, incident was January 16th, 2020, so during that school year, the school day ended at 2:50. And the students who remained, who were going to leave the school in the car rider area at the gym, were to be supervised by a teacher.
Counsel, the ultimate determination the trial court reached here is an absence of foreseeability, right? And foreseeability is an interesting concept, and negligence sort of pops its head up in various places. Is your argument in this case challenging a factual determination by the trial court? A legal determination by the trial court? And we have something, we have a bench trial here, so I mean, we don't have a jury determination. Is this a fact question, a law question, a mixed question? What is it?
I respectfully submit that it's mixed. I think it's a mixed question of law and fact. I think the trial court clearly concluded that there was a duty.
And how would you describe the duty in this case? What was the school's duty?
The duty to provide supervision to students upon the school day ending, when they were going home, to protect them from unreasonable risk of harm.
And was it a particular type of supervision that had to be conducted? I mean, I gather from the court's order that sometimes the supervision would take place within the school building. So in other words, the teacher would be looking through a window out at the students.
That's correct, Your Honor.
So would that have satisfied the duty if they had had a teacher do that?
I respectfully submit that under these circumstances that it would. Mr. Holder testified...
That it would?
Yes, Your Honor. Mr. Holder testified in some instances, whenever he was in the light car rider area at the front of the school, that sometimes a teacher would be in the window watching those students before they left. But I think what is crucial in this case is that the presence of a teacher is a deterrent in and of itself to mischievous behavior, which is what happened here. There's no evidence, and Mr. Sanders did not feel it was the situation either, that these boys were trying to hurt each other.
Does it matter whether it's foreseeable that there's horseplay with injury where a student is injured versus these particular students becoming involved in horseplay? Does that matter in terms of whether this was foreseeable or not? And if, or does essentially the school board, if they can show there's not foreseeable that these two were necessarily going to fight? And do we care in terms of that division? Does it matter?
It does matter, in my opinion, Your Honor. The trial court clearly concluded that the absence of a history between these two young men was dispositive of the issue when it comes to foreseeability and the proximate cause analysis. But the fact that the policy exists in general, Mr. Sanders acknowledged that it was in part to provide safety to the students with respect to this dismissal procedure and the student supervision. And it was expected that a teacher would intervene if students were engaging in horseplay. And it's foreseeable that, I respectfully submit that it's foreseeable that children of this age can inadvertently hurt one another while engaging in horseplay.
Was there any testimony elicited in this case where the injured student testified that he would not have initiated any horseplay had there been a teacher present?
Mr. Holder did not specifically state that during his testimony, the student.
I mean, I am struggling here. I mean, I know the court decided this on proximate cause, but I am struggling with cause and fact here. Could we really say that not having a teacher present is a but-for cause of the injury here?
Well, Mr. Sanders acknowledged that the presence of the teacher is a deterrent to student misbehavior in general. That's part of the reason that the policy exists.
But there was also testimony that even when there is supervisor there, a fight could break out right beside the teacher.
But a teacher can quell the dispute and antagonism that's going on between students right away if it happens in front of a teacher.
But if you describe the duty as just merely a duty to supervise, and that duty can be fulfilled by a teacher watching the students from inside the school, I mean, there would be no way that that teacher could avoid a situation like this where rapidly, I mean, escalation is sort of the wrong word for one here. It's sort of like an ole movement, and I mean, not to make light of the situation. Obviously, the plaintiff here had a serious injury. But I'm not sure how a teacher watching from inside could have prevented what happened.
I respectfully submit that a teacher in close proximity to these students in the office would have been able to see that Mr. Favors and Mr. Holder were communicating with one another in a manner that would have appeared to be aggressive. We don't know how long this had been going on because seven seconds into the video clip that's in the record, we see them actually physically engaged, where Mr. Holder first puts his hand on Mr. Favors, and at the 13-second mark, that's when he goes down. So that part's a little bit hard to know the answer to, but I think it's reasonable to conclude that a teacher, with respect to this interaction, would have been able to exit the front door of the school building to intercede and attempt to...
Is there any reason in this record why a teacher that was present there would have focused on these two students?
Not based on the evidence that's in the record. There was some evidence through the testimony of Mr. Sanders that they had some disciplinary history, but nothing that was of any significance. No history of violence, no history of fighting that he testified to. He characterized it as general misbehavior. And I think that's what the crux of this is. You know, the trial court relied heavily on this court's opinion in the Mason case, which was, you know, based on criminal violence between two students. And in that case, there was a finding of no liability because there was no known history between the two students involved in that. And I believe that that is a sensible analysis for a case that involves violence between two students. But it's a horse of a different color when you're analyzing a situation like this, when it's known that students can be kids, mischievous, engage in just generalized horseplay, and can inadvertently cause injury. And that's what a teacher is for in terms of supervision, to limit those situations and to intercede and to stop that.
I'm interested in your response to Judge Usman's question about our standard of review here. You're indicating that the proximate cause is a mixed question in this case. Is that solely because this was not a jury trial? This was just a bench trial that you come to that? Or is there something special about this situation that makes it a mixed question?
It's just based on the language and the analysis in the trial court's order. When he got specifically to the proximate cause analysis, of course, you have the substantial factor component. Is there any rule of law that would otherwise excuse a defendant from being held liable for negligence? And then you get to the foreseeability component.
So I know in the Roberts against Robertson County case, the court there said, you know, proximate cause is, and for silly, unique problems when they were made by a trial judge sitting without a jury. And the court goes on to say, usually these terminations are within the exclusive domain of the jury. And then it goes, however, they involve not only factual matters, but also mixed considerations of logic, common sense, public policy, and precedent. So you're not saying that is what makes this a mixed question. You're saying the way the court analyzed this makes it a mixed question.
But I guess a better way of articulating is the way that you did. It's because of that language in the Roberts opinion. Yes, Your Honor. I'm not suggesting that the trial court went about the task incorrectly. But also, you know, the foreseeability component is also intertwined with the duty analysis, too. But the judge didn't appear to get hung up on that. He seemed to pass that and get to the proximate cause analysis that is discussed in that Roberts opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Calhoun. We'll hear from you on rebuttal. Good afternoon, Mr. Spinning.
Good afternoon, Judge. Nice to be here. My name is Carl Spinning, and I represent Marshall County Board of Education, the defendant appellate in this matter. And I would, as always defending the school system, start off with, the schools are not insurers of the students under their care. I understand, and the courts have all recognized that there is a duty of reasonable care. And so that's how frequently we end up in these situations. But I think the first premise, kind of dovetailing on the duty argument, is that, you know, unless there is some breach that goes beyond a reasonable standard, then there is no liability on the school system. I also...
Well, there's no dispute here, is there? That this particular school had a policy that the students in this pickup line would be supervised?
Correct, Your Honor. And frankly, there's no dispute that a teacher was not present, which I think is apparent.
And what was the teacher's, the supervising teacher? What was that person's duty? What were they supervising or controlling?
So as Mr. Calhoun indicated, there is no written policy, or there's not a chart that says you need to be here, or here, or here. So it's a very, I would say, casual supervision, much like a recess. For example, you know, the teachers need to be out on the recess yard sort of watching and seeing how things are developing. So I don't think it's a situation like, for example, a security guard, where, you know, you're supposed to hold on to this person until they get clear from any further...
Is one of the reasons for that to prevent horseplay among students?
Yes, Your Honor. In fact, Morgan Sanders, the assistant principal, admitted that in his testimony, so I agree.
Then why isn't this foreseeable? I mean, that's the type of injury. It's the reason you have the teacher there as a policy. You're anticipating horseplay, given the students this age, having been released from school after school. Why isn't this foreseeable?
Well, I would go back to your cause and fact comment that had anyone been there, a teacher, a supervisor of any sort, there's no way that they could have stopped this action.
But doesn't opposing counsel suggest that it's here, the students may have, the students never would have engaged in this type of conduct? They wouldn't have, we wouldn't expect them to have started this type of horseplay if there was a teacher standing there watching?
Well, I would submit, first of all, that that's speculation, that we don't know. Second of all, Mr. Sanders also testified that in his years of experience, that he literally could be standing in the hallway, and a fight break out right next to him. So I do not agree with the factual speculation that the presence of a teacher is necessarily going to stop horseplay.
Well, let's start with a more fundamental issue there. What is our standard of review here? Are we reviewing a mixed question? Or is this a factual issue that we're going to give a presumption of correctness?
I would submit, Your Honor, that foreseeability is a question of fact, and a presumption of correctness should be given to the findings by the trial court on those issues, namely, the fact that supervision would not have intervened in the situation, or would not have prevented the situation, and also that there was no prior history between these two students. And I also think that the prior history is really a vein that comes through all of the cases, or maybe not all, but the ones where we have a fight in the locker room, or we have a knife blade on the bus, or we have, unfortunately, a shooting at the gymnasium.
Counsel, let me ask you about that. The trial court says, Tennessee follows the more conservative foreseeability approach. The student misconduct is not to be anticipated absent proof of prior misconduct. That sounds like an absolute rule, that the trial court understands this as, in the absence of prior misconduct, you simply cannot have foreseeable horseplay or whatever that there would be liability for. That sounds like a legal determination in terms of the analysis. And so, yeah, just assuming for purpose of argument. I know, taking the position, that's what case law reflects. But let's say it's wrong. Doesn't that make it a question of law rather than fact, or at least a mixed question of law and fact?
Well, Your Honor, I think the case law is pretty strong on foreseeability as a question of fact. And y'all are certainly more experts than me. But I do think that then the court and the judge, the trial judge in this case, can make a determination based on those facts.
Does it get more complicated, though, in a bench trial? I mean, normally, we have jury instructions, and we can look at them and see, was the jury properly instructed? And that's a legal question. Then we've got the factual determination of proximate cause. Here, we have the judge sort of walking us through the thinking, the legal analysis of these questions that's undergirding the ultimate factual determination. And isn't a bench trial with a decision like this that has a thoughtful opinion, that the judge explored exactly what led to the conclusion here? Aren't we in a little bit of a different spot with that type of decision?
I would say no, Your Honor. I understand your point, but I would lean on the fact that, as you just mentioned, the judge did a very thoughtful, thorough, and not only factual analysis of the cases, but also, I'm sorry, of the evidence, but also going through the foreseeability. You know, it's a winding path, and I thought he navigated it very well. So that is really my best answer to your question. I mean, I can understand how mixed questions could come into play here, but I think the foreseeability has been long established as a fact question.
Well, so what are we to make of the language in Roberts where the court says the issues of negligence, contributory negligence, proximate cause, and for silly, present not only factual matters, but also mixed considerations of logic, common sense, public policy, and precedent? I mean, what does that, what does that mean in terms of how we're supposed to review this? Am I looking for illogic? Am I looking for public policy? You know, what is the, this judge's view of what the public policy should be in this case? I mean, what does all that mean?
Well, I would start with, what I started with earlier, is that if we start with public policy, then the public policy is that schools are not insurers of the safety of each and every child at their school. I would also point to the language that you just read, that quote, "common sense." And I think the common sense analysis is a factual analysis. And even the public policy analysis, really, at the end of the day, of the day, is more of a factual analysis, I think, because public policy, you know, is not necessarily legislation or case law. So I would still lean towards it's just a straight-up fact question on foreseeability.
Well, and I assume in 1985, this court was very much aware of the difference between a question of fact, a question of law, and mixed questions. In Roberts, we never say this is a mixed question of law or fact. I mean, we just don't.
No, it doesn't. And even in the quote that you read, the judges in that case don't go quite so far as to say it's a mixed question. So I would submit it is not a mixed question. So I just wanted to point out, I think it's been brought up, but certainly, that the plaintiff-appellant in this case initiated the contact. The contact lasted approximately six seconds. So, and that, I think, establishes two points, that the plaintiff-appellant was in control of his behavior, regardless of whatever supervision he had or didn't have. And given the six seconds, it just is impossible that any sort of supervision was going to be able to stop this situation.
You mentioned six seconds. Mr. Calhoun mentioned 13.
What I heard him say, he can certainly correct me, is that at the seven-second mark is when the contact starts on the video. And then at the 13-second mark is when the confrontation ends. So that's where I came up with six.
The recording is 13 seconds, but your position is the horseplay was six seconds?
Correct. I think it's actually a little bit longer than that. There's some, a little bit prior the incident, and then maybe a little in the aftermath. But I think when Mr. Holder, who actually was offensive lineman, sort of takes the position, and he tries to block Mr. Favors, that whole sequence happens in about six seconds. And just viewing the video, I mean, you know, it just happened so quickly that it's not as if, you know, they were sparring, and they're kind of, you know, dancing around in a circle, and there's a bunch of kids getting around, getting ready for this. They are, there is a back and forth, but, I mean, just in a split second, Mr. Holder tries to push Mr. Favors. And then, was it you that mentioned the ole move that allowed him to fall on the ground? And then just finally, I'll just, once again, I would like to mention the, hopefully I say this almost correctly, Chudusarath case, where there is a fight in the girls' locker room. And the reason that I think that case is so important, one, it's similar to this case, but two, it was a gym class, and the gym teacher allowed the students to leave the gym, I want to say 10 minutes prior to the bell ringing, to go into the locker room in order to, you know, change and do whatever. And it's when they're in the locker room that they're unsupervised. And also, the argument...
Everybody in that case knew that there was going to be, I mean, first of all, there was only going to be one teacher, and so you had both males and females. And so everyone knew there was, has to be a period of unsupervised time with the, for the students. Here, you know, the unwritten policy was they were to be supervised.
Yes, Your Honor. I understand.
And that didn't happen.
And that did not happen. But I do think, like, for example, going back to Chudusarath, there was a policy against allowing the students to leave the gym early and be unsupervised. And the plaintiff, from my reading of the case anyway, seemed to lean heavily on the fact that there was a policy violation, and that it was almost somehow negligence per se. And the court rejected that argument, which is why I wanted to discuss it for a moment.
The court focused, it seems to me, solely on proximate cause here in its opinion ultimately. I mean, it dealt with, mentioned all the elements, but it focused in right on that. And, you know, I am still struggling a little bit with the but-for, the cause and fact here. I mean, was that presented here in the trial, or contested the but-for?
Well, I would say yes. And the quote that I would point to is Mr. Morgan Sanders saying that he has been in the hallway, and a fight breaks out right next to him. And therefore, supervision is not going to be the but-for in a tort case, in a negligence case. And that testimony is very clearly in the record. It's also in the trial court's order. And I think the trial court relied heav, I mean, he says, I am compelled by, or I'm impressed by the testimony from Mr. Sanders, that these situations happen all the time. I mean, any classroom is going to have some amount of horseplay, and it's just unfortunate in this particular case.
But still, the court focused on proximate cause and not cause and fact.
Fair enough, fair enough. But I think the judge was really looking at foreseeability, and perhaps, you know, we could meld those concepts together, cause and fact and foreseeability. So my reading of the judge's analysis is that he felt like, in order for an injury to be foreseeable, it has to be anticipated. It has to be, you know, within reasonable care that this is going to happen. So I don't know that that really answers your question, but that's kind of how I see it.
Yeah, so just to make sure I'm clear from the record here, was there any proof, so we have an eighth grader and a seventh grader, is that correct?
Correct.
At the time? Any proof that these two students knew each other, or had a relationship at all?
Yes, Your Honor. That proof was actually elicited from Mr., I asked Mr. Holder, "Did you even know Mr. Favors?" And he said, "I knew of him, but we're, you know, they're not in the same classes. They're not in the same football." You know, they just don't, I don't think Shooter Favors played football. So anyway, to answer your question as succinctly as I can, there was no proof, and in fact, the proof suggested that there was no relationship whatsoever between these two students.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Spinning.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Calhoun, your rebuttal.
In my view, the dispositive issue before the court would be purely factual-based, which would, of course, mean that the trial court's factual findings would be afforded a presumption of correctness if the trial judge concluded that there was no duty due to lack of foreseeability. But that's not what happened. He went through all of the factors for negligence analysis. He got to the fifth one, proximate cause, and that's where he made the foreseeability determination, not at step one.
So you would argue that we should presume that the judge here found but for cause, cause and fact, by focusing on proximate cause?
Yes, Your Honor. Instead of concluding that there's just no foreseeability here, therefore, there's no duty. And he did not do that. He got to the fifth step of that analysis. So that's why, also, in my view, the question is, before the court, is not purely factual in nature. It is more of a mixed question of law and fact. And I would like to mention the Chudusama case that Mr. Spinning made mention of, because it's an important case that involved student violence as well. But in that opinion, this court stated, while we concede that the presence of a responsible adult in the locker room would probably have prevented the incident, would you not find any negligence in Mr. Sumral's failure to more closely monitor the girls' locker room in light of his concurrent responsibility for the gymnasium and the boys' locker room? So the the court, even in that case, did conclude that the presence of an adult would have, more than, more likely than not, would have made a difference in the outcome. And here, I respectfully submit that the presence of an adult more likely would have prevented the outcome here and Mr. Holder's injury. That's why the school has this, it's an unwritten policy, but it's a student, it's a policy that's well-understood. They tackled, they tackled this at the beginning of the school year. The assistant principal creates a duty schedule for the supervision throughout the year. And, you know, the the trial court really focused on Mason, you know, that there's no history between these two students. And that would be a sound analysis if these boys clearly were just fighting, they'd just gotten in a fight and were trying to hurt each other. He would have gotten it right. But that's not what happened here. This isn't like Mason, and it's not like Chudusam, and it's not like Kindred, the school shooting case in Memphis, where the student returned and shot the student, what he had gotten in a fight with a short bit earlier. These boys were just fooling around and and horseplaying outside after school. It's unknown why the teacher was not with the students at the time. Mr. Sanders did not have an answer for that. But the ultimate issue is, would it have made a difference? And more likely than not, it would have made a difference had the school complied with its own supervision policy. And it just didn't happen here, and that's negligence. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Calhoun and Mr. Spinning for your arguments. We'll take your case under advisement. Please call the next case.